He goes back, he goes, "We can get your all that for free, plus you're paying seventy-seven dollars a month." "How many of you are paying me nine dollars a year?"
You're like, uh...
For five years.
Is that what that was for you?
And then he goes, on top of that, he listens for five years. Fifty-nine dollars, fifty-nine cents. He goes, "It expires in five years." I hope that. He goes, "In five years, call us up." And he gets several dollars. I... It's cool.
Yeah, you know all of that?
Yeah, yeah, all for sure. We're gonna look out for a bit, we've got a lot in here. More orders and shirts? One cup, you know? They won't give you a discount.
Oh, okay. The last one you owe, right? I'm down with you.
So, dollars?
They made the mail on delivery.
No, 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 I'm kidding.
Uh, I went doing this. I already asked him before, gee, I said, "Can I get my four or five things all the way?" He goes, "We know where they are, so we'll take care of it."
What did you say, dude? Did you say that?
I don't know exactly where they're at. I said, "We'll take care of it." We'll be out there.
Scotty, same laws, bro. We're taking everybody to town.
I said three, the declaration today. You know, two of them, a couple of them, a couple of them.
Almost a brand.
I don't know. He already had, he had going to the county. He put a container on both, he's already got it. So, yeah. I'm very, I'm gonna have to deal with him a little less differently. Yeah.
Let's call the big house, and where you're going to end up.
Oh, um...
New shirts, new patches? That's what you're saying. Yeah, those are new patches.
Uh, oh, saying I got bad breath?
Yeah.
Oh, the one?
It's working now. I'm sorry, we're not saying it's a change. Not even the sanctuary account is like... Right, sanctuary state. No. No, exactly. I would prefer you said it, but sanctuary state. It counts for time.
Or, or, oh, you mean the...
They go there, they're all kind of sure. You know, they'll catch you, they're like... And you see, um, he's on the list, um... And he said, "You know..." "I'm pushing, can't, can't..." "That's all right." Uh, that's all right. Well, I'm, the rest you have, uh...
I've gotten that, actually. Got that. That's not one of the, that's not a profession, that was looking for me. But, uh... But they're being like, "Oh, this." And then you give me the product, and you're just like, "Well, this is..."
Yeah. It's bad, they don't make it.
Hello, hiya, Billy.
Here we go.
Good yourself?
We're, uh, we're here.
Hey, you guys might want to start cruising fifth and, uh, K.
Start cruising it.
Cruising. Now, we seen a semi come out, I threw the trailer, about thirty-foot trailer, come out of Fifth Street, make a left on K, go down the second, we're in a right-hand turn. And he parked in front of a house on Fifth Street. Uh, where, I can tell you exactly where it was at. There's, there's that orange house on Fifth.
Uh-huh.
Uh, exactly which, which street, like, the intersection. But he was parked next to, next to the house. And the house is orange, but...
Jeff, we've seen it. But this morning we went after a few...
Yeah. Uh, no, I didn't...
And then we didn't do it here, on this side, we got everywhere.
Awesome.
You gonna listen?
Y'all ready?
Yeah, we can agree to disagree, I guess.
David, are we having Patrick or no?
Says might be here at all.
Might not be here at all.
Okay.
Are we going to the closer?
No.
Said we don't need him, we're good.
We don't. Y'all ready? All right, here we go. I call this regular session of the Lovington Commission to Order. Shannon, roll call, please.
Mayor Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Gany?
Here.
Mr. Bo?
Here.
Mr. Tridio?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Commissioner Gany, would you like to lead us in our invocation this evening?
Let's see, is there a pinch hitter? Nope.
Nope, you're it. Unless you call somebody else.
Will you play with me, please? Dear and Father, Mother, we just thank you for this absolutely beautiful day. It was cold, but, Lord, we thank you for it. We thank you for the many blessings that you've given this community. Lord God, we pray for the commission as we seek to do the city's business today. Lord God, I just pray for your wisdom and your foresight, that you would give each one of us that ability to do what is right for our community. Lord God, I just pray that you would continue to work in our community, that you would continue to bless us. I just pray that you would be with each department we have in our city, protect and watch over them, keep them safe at all times. And, Lord God, I just pray for each one of our citizens, that they would prosper in this new year, and that they would always give you the glory and the honor. And we thank you for your son, Jesus Christ. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Join us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, what a nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stalest with the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zealous symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Maybe see. All right.
Doors open. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Motion second to approve the agenda? Are you okay?
It's an animal.
Okay. Is there any additions? Hearing none. Shannon, please.
Mr. Tridio?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Gany?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for consideration of the minutes of January 27, 2025.
Okay, motion second for adoption of the minutes. Any corrections? Discussion? Hearing none. Shannon?
Mr. Gany?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tridio?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
All right, brings to our Commissioner's staff report. Ms. Shannon, how are you this evening? Really, really good, thank you. Do you have anything for us this evening?
No, sir, I'm good.
Okay. To go?
Not at this time.
All right. Chief, brings it to you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, Officer's activities for the month of January is calls of service was 969. Self-initiated calls were 477. We had 66 citations with 30 title arrests. Code enforcement, we had 301 calls for service, eight warning citations, and 293 code citations. We hired two uncertified people, both will start in the next couple of weeks. We had several others that was in the process, but they failed to pass the test, you know, the physical test aspect of the process. I had a meeting, I went to a meeting in Albuquerque with HSI, which is ICE, in reference to the illegal criminals within our cities across New Mexico. There's been some misinformation that's been reported by the media on how and where the illegal criminals are being apprehended. They said the criteria for ICE to look for any illegals or pick them up, they have to be convicted of a crime, charged with a crime. They have a deportation order that, which basically tells them that they need to leave on their own, and they're gang members. No agents will go into schools, churches, or hospitals. If they do go into those, it's because they're chasing somebody they're trying to apprehend. But they will not go into those looking for anybody. Just to repeat, they're only trying to pick up criminals. Would that, I'll say, for any questions?
All right, questions?
Did they say roughly how many people they were looking for in City of New Mexico? Just by chance?
No, our area, they said they're targeting like 50.
Wow.
So, that's not in Levington, that's Lake County, Eddy County.
Southeastern area?
Right.
Wow. Now, it is my understanding, Chief, though, if they find one of the people they're looking for, and they happen to have other people there that don't have authorization being in the United States, they will deport them also. So, I basically tell anyone that maybe...
They said that if there's anybody there, they're gonna interview everybody. Like, we pull over a vehicle, and we determine the drivers, they're illegal, they're gonna interview everybody, and determine what their status is. There may be people that are, came with a, like a visa for a weekend pass or whatever, and they've overstayed their time. There's a lot of different scenarios where they could get deported. But just normal people working, like crop people or anybody like that, dairy workers, they're gonna not, they're gonna be targeted.
Targeted.
Right.
I just advise the ones that I knew, stay away from the criminals.
Yeah, they said, not at this time.
Phase one. Thank you, sir. Any other questions? All right. Archie?
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. So, we still have construction ongoing in the station. It is a progression event, but they are moving along, they're doing a good job. We had one of our employees who just recently passed his fire one, fire two, and graduated his fire academy, and he also received his basic EMS license, like, the same weekend. So, we have had one employee who's turned in his resignation. He has been with us for approximately four years. He is going through the Artesia Fire Department, and we're currently advertising for that position. The new ambulances should be here sometime this month. This is the two vent-style transport ambulances that we received through Capital Outlay. So, the total cost for both of those together was about, right at $300,000. The other one that we're receiving is a big box ambulance that we bought a cabin chassis for, and then we had the box off of one of our old ambulances remounted. That's why we went with this style, because you can remount them up to 10 times. And, so the cost for that, with the cabin chassis and the remount, was right at $230,000, which is less than half the price of buying a new big box, which is over $500,000. So, we're trying to now do that to replace the old ambulances. I do have Matt Ritchie here, he wants to, he's gonna talk about the IROL, which y'all all have a copy of.
Good evening, sir.
What the IROL is, and we're just kinda seeing if we need to make this an act item to vote on or not, what this is, is an agreement between a third party. Anytime that there's an annual speaker system inspection or firearm inspection, what the Fire Sector Texts that do that inspection, they'll upload their review and inspection to this company, who is comprised of plumbers, electricians, and can verify if that service is actually in compliance. Not having a background in plumbing or electrical, this would help me during my inspections, that I just got to check and make sure everything's compliant. It'll also help me just keep up the schedule that they're being done anyway.
And this doesn't cost us?
It doesn't cost us anything. The Fire Sector Texts, it'll cost them $25, $25 dollars to upload themselves, cost the department or the city nothing.
We just kinda wanted to bring this up to let y'all know kinda what it was, what it's about, and I didn't figure this would really be anything to vote on, because it's not a, really, it's just an agreement between us and those that say that we want to use this.
Then he shows you a contract, actually.
And there's no, like I said, there's no cost to us or nothing.
Any question on that?
And that's why I gave y'all the package, so that, and my last item is the numbers for January are as follows. We have 220 EMS calls, 51 interfacility transfers, 20 airport transfers, 40 cancel refusal DOA, 16 title calls, and then 26 fire calls. So, that's all at this time, no questions.
Okay, chief.
Chief, any update on the medical transport vans?
That's what I was just talking about, that...
I don't know if I missed that.
They should be here. Hopefully, we should have them by the end of this month. I just spoke with Charles today, and they're just waiting on the second one to be 100% complete, and then they will fly, they will pay to fly our guys out there and inspect them, to make sure they're up to spec. And then when they do that, they will also drive the remounted ambulance back to Levington. So, we will get them all right around the same time.
I'm kinda like the city manager. I kinda understood just the ambulances, to be honest, but it's not a big deal.
Yeah, two oil worth of vent-style transport ambulances that we got off the...
Right.
Are they gas or diesel?
They're gas. We went with gas, because the upkeep on diesel these days, the fuel's so expensive, I mean, oil changes, you're looking at $400 bucks, and gasoline, you're looking at about $100 bucks. And we don't have $8,000 turbos that are blowing, or it's just easier and cheaper upkeep. Same thing with our big box, we went with the gas engine.
Really?
Yes. So, we will have three diesel and three gas engines.
What is the engine in the cab? Just out of curiosity.
What are they?
What chassis is it?
The big box is, they're Ford, yes, sir. The 450 is the big box.
So, it's gonna be the 7.3?
And then, well...
Or the 6.2?
7.2, I believe.
7.3?
7.3. And then the, vent style, it'll be the F250s. And they are literally just for transport.
They'll be like the 3.5 Eco Booster or whatever.
We have to have the big boxes, because that's what we have to use for our AMS runs. I mean, if we're working a car, you can't do that in a small ambulance, so those literally are just for transfers. And, I mean, when you can get two of them for $300,000 compared to one big box at over $500,000. And I hate to say they're cookie cutter vehicles, but kinda in a way, they are. I mean, you work on them as long as you can, and after, you just replace them.
I think it's a good decision.
Thank you. Going further. Hearing none. Commissioner Bo?
Just like to thank everyone for being here. Commission, city staff, people of our community, thank you very much for coming. Again, I'll say, as I always say, e-vocal, bi-vocal, shop vocal, where it's important to our businesses. Last week, I was able to go up to Santa Fe and meet with a bunch of people from representing Lee County, so had some good discussion with a bunch of people. I like to think that it was a productive meeting. Again, thank you all for being here.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Trejo?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right. Mr. White? Commissioner Gany?
I don't have anything to say.
All right.
Good evening. We've just been working on how to keep operations running and working on the audit. I don't know if y'all have any questions?
Do you have a completion date for the audit?
For what?
Do you have a completion date for the audit?
Before the next one's due. A little sooner than that.
Yeah.
Well, I said it, before.
I mean, I'd like to have it completed at least by March, and March is possible, because our budget starts in March.
I had a conversation with Ed on that today, because I reached out to the auditor, because the letter that we sent the state auditor in December said, and it was the letter recommended by our auditor, said that we'd be turning it in in January, so obviously, that didn't happen. So, rather than send in a second letter in, say, March or April, Ed recommended by June 30th. That way, we come in early, we don't have to send a second letter or a third letter to the OSA and say, you know, keep putting it off, because, and I was gonna talk about this in a second.
Yeah.
He wants to work on preparing the audit, and at the same time, get caught up on our bank reconciliations, because we still owe a second quarter DFA report, so we don't wanna fall behind on that.
Could we be updated on this, as far as our audit, where we're at, like, weekly, sent to us, knowing that we're moving in the right direction? I believe that we are, but it's highly imperative that we, and I know we all know this, but we need to get that done. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, appreciate it. City manager?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Ed Fierro was in all of last week, and we met with the whole finance department. We went over all the data needed by the auditors, which was tasked to different people to prepare. There's probably about 12 items that we need to get. Additionally, work will begin on bank reconciliations for the second quarter, as efforts are made to prepare data for Michael Steininger for our second quarter DFA report, that's October, November, and December of last year. Secondly, work began last week on the Veterans Memorial Project, and the property has been graded down almost to subgrade. Was gonna talk about the RFP for the ANA Title Loans Building, but we're gonna address that in action. Finally, Commissioner Bolt asked for an update on the retail and housing development project on North Main Street. As you may remember, this includes a Wendy's, a 10,000-square-foot shopping center, a 62-unit housing development, and an Albertson's supermarket with a C store and gas station. A year ago, the city placed $500,000 of gasoline tax municipal street funds into an escrow account for roadway improvements to North Main Street, to facilitate the NMDOT mandated upgrades to the street to accommodate the extra traffic and turning that is involved in this expansion. These funds are only payable once the Main Street project is complete. On a conference call last Friday, the contractor who won the bid, Ramirez and Sons, advised that because material costs have increased in the past year, but more significantly because New Mexico's state wage minimums on government projects have risen drastically since then, that a $48,000 increase to the original Ramirez bid of $505,000 would have to be added at the end of the project. Bear in mind that Ramirez's bid came in at more than $100,000 lower than the next best bid. Ramirez stated that if they had to go out and bid this job today, it would come in at about $610,000 rather than $505,000. So, we do not believe that they're being unreasonable. As the commission knows, these jobs are mandated by the state of New Mexico to pay certain minimum hourly wage rates by job position. However, Albertson's, who is the anchor store of this project, has offered to pay half of this $48,000 increase, meaning that the city only has to pay an additional $24,000 to make the necessary roadway improvements for this $17 million project. I have checked with Melissa, and the city has more than adequate funds in the municipal gasoline tax street account to cover this cost increase. Wendy's will create 35 new jobs, Albertson's will create 150 permanent jobs. Besides contributing to permanent GRTs, this nine-month project will infuse a lot of construction GRTs into our city as well. Lastly, the Albertson's project is set to begin in a matter of three to four weeks. There will be a groundbreaking ceremony on Thursday, February 25th, at 10:00 a.m. Access will be on the North First Street entrance, since it is safer to try to access by North Main Street. Lastly, I have Robert Perez is going to update the commission on the Booster One tank cleanout, but I'd be happy to stand for any questions in the meantime about the Albertson's project or anything else.
Yes, question?
I'm sorry, Tuesday. Tuesday, February 25th, Tuesday, February 25th, 10:00 a.m. All are welcome.
We have one question, and maybe Evelyn can help us out. On the lift station, how are we doing the lift station on the cycle of...
On the site?
Yes, sir.
I think any, to have that fixed, anything?
I mean, but did every, everything's gonna match up to where we have a good flow now?
Well, if you're talking about the North Main Street lift sta, North Love Street, sorry, North Love Street lift station, we have gotten engineering drawings on that, we've got $500,000 through State Capital Outlay to upgrade that lift station, because it's on that same line to handle the additional sewage, but it hasn't been installed yet.
And what I'm saying, if our timeline is nine months, we gotta get this done within nine months, I don't want everything backing up, and then we have no, everything shut down on our, on our side of the fence instead of theirs.
Didn't put that in RFP for the construction? For the lift station? Okay. We have the engineering dogs, it's just a question of... I believe Ramirez is gonna bid for it, they're in CEO, so maybe a couple others, but...
I think it's vital, is what I'm saying, because I don't want nothing to happen to hospital or anything like that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other? Hearing none. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
You wanna bring Robert up now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What do you... You wanna play the...
Yeah.
So, and ask me questions again.
I started forgetting the audio.
Yeah. I can play it from the computer itself.
But basically, with 1000 and the big tanks?
Yeah, it's 14, almost 15 speed in the Booster One tank, that's what it works about. It'll show you where it's at the middle, it'll show you from start to finish what they've done, the repair that they did on the outside of the tank, the valves that are supposed to be, that are supposed to be working, that are not working, that's why we haven't had somebody in there cleaning it out.
To trap the sound.
That is the last tank that we've got. Everything else in town has gotten done, the big towers, the other tanks.
Now, this is the second dive of the day, kind of got here to start even a group of those who are sand. I don't wanna look behind me, because I don't wanna lose my hopes. This is the second manway from the ladder to the west, what we would call about the 7, 8 o'clock position. So, when we were here last, or initially, this thing was completely buried. So, that's gonna tell the issue. Way over there, I'm not sure if you can see it, that's our peak. That's about 14, 15 feet. So, we're not really concerned with, you know, the footer two that's on the floor over here. We're definitely gonna work into this pile, and get as much of it as we can in the four days that we have for allotment. I did check the handles, the handles are, I'm not sure what condition this was in, it's laying next to this inlet. We have 1.2 volts and 22 milliamps, so the system is still working good. You can see there, you've still got pretty good definition of the handle, so there's something to replace the handles at this time, so. Anyway, we just kinda wanna do it before and after, as a reference, so we're gonna expose all this and hopefully that, in the next four days. So, with that information, that's going to go off now. Okay, we're back on line recording, not in the right state resources. We're here from the city of Levington, and this is Booster One tank. So, I'm physically sorry, everybody, but again, now, when we first started, I've got another video, I think the sand was a little bit below this sign, above this sign. And when we were originally here last year, this entire thing was buried, no one could see what's in it. That's for reference of the patch we did of the leak. So, literally, you can see how much sand we removed out of here. When we first started, this manway was half my covered, that one you couldn't see, that one you couldn't see, the foot and et cetera. Did you kinda see the line there? And it's tampered off, so our, our big goal was to get as much sand away from the shell as we could, and I think we did a damn good job of doing that. Now, this, this piece in the middle is probably, I would say, almost 14 feet tall, still. But there ain't any more time to give you more sand out of here, we were on it four days, and we're at the end of our first day. One thing that I wanted to mention is there are two drains in here. There's one there that corresponds with that bracket on the wall, and there's another one here that corresponds with that bracket on the wall. Now, in the past, the first pump I was here in '21, I was informed that the water operators used to cycle these drain valves. Now, whether those drain valves are still in operation, or not operation, I don't know. But time to help clear it, a lot of this sand out of here, and this is your gateway, so this is when the sand starts, and pours in here. So, what they used to do is they would cycle those drain valves, and then when they'd drink, and keep up, then they would call CDB Niners, who was down on Can I Stand Resources, and we'd come out here and they'd move the sand, and it wasn't 14 feet tall. So, something to keep in mind, and maybe something to try. Now, I'm trying to guess, on a tri-train to get the rest of this sand out of here, and as I'm playing now, I would say, we're probably looking at another five days, four to five days. There's a decent mountain over there, but it isn't near as high as, as much of here. That's your center support, and your mountain is the way it settles there. So, we moved a lot of sand, as evident by what's come back. So, anyway, we just kinda wanted to give you guys an update, and we're wrapped, so. With that information, that's going to go off now.
So, what's the cost of four days?
Almost $14,000.
Was it 30 to come back?
It was, it was 30 altogether, but it was 14, just, he wanted the other five days, but in the process of that, we're trying to get the valves repaired, so if we can get at least one of those in the flesh, rest of that stuff, that's, that's, I have to pay for it.
Okay. I was just kinda curious.
Yes, sir.
Do we do an integrity study on those forward?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, everything is good on the tanks, with our stickers, everything on there, so everything's, everything except that bullet that it had, been prepared, everything's good, the electrodes are good, everything's good.
Is it hyperback, Robert?
Is that...
Is there hyperback, or has it...
Yes.
Other question? Robert, while you're here, you may not have heard Commissioner Trejo's question, would you speak on how we are, basically, the way I understood his question, and, you know, if I'm wrong, basically, when we get everything built there, are we going to handle, be able to handle the affluent and that's being developed in that whole area? And I know that his, it was a little bit more specific on the lift station that's, that's gonna be on that piece of property, but everything's gotta cycle down and through, and then come back to the Levington, I mean, the South Love, North Love Lift Station. So, how are we on all of that?
We're gonna be good on that part. We spoke to JCH on the lift station itself, I think we got, got it mostly ordered, the majority of it, which would be good on that part. The rest of it went on Ramirez and Sons, the electrical, other than that, I think anything else that would come up with it, we're, the city would handle that part. I think we also need to have a conversation, and we'll meet with Ramirez and Sons on that part, to see what they're gonna want us to do, or what if that part is, why it's getting constructed. I think we also need to have a conversation and meet with Ramirez and Sons on that part to see what, if they want us to do, or whatever that part is, why it's getting constructed. Um, it should be a drop-in lift station just where they're ripping everything out, just digging a hole, dropping it in, then putting our conscious stuff in there. Shouldn't be that long, once we have everything there. The four eighties are already transferred from Lee County Electors, they already done their part, their service is there for the new one. Everything else is where it needs to be at this point. Our transfer pumps are ready, we've posed, we've got everything done, just in case we need them for that time, we'll be okay. There shouldn't be any problem that we can see right now, as you know, going forward, anything come up, as of right now, it seems to be okay. We'll be okay.
Okay. We had a meeting, um, several months ago, you know, probably a year and a half ago. Evelyn, if I'm wrong, please correct me, but the discharge of the newest lift station that they installed ends up in a four-inch line that passes through the existing apartments.
Yes.
Okay. Do we feel, because that's, that then ties into, and it's been so long, I can't, I can't remember all of the sizes of pipes, but it ties into a, another line that's on the north side of the apartments that's bigger than the four-inch. With all of that, are we pretty secure, we're, we're okay?
That lift station has never been used yet.
I realize that.
So without it being used, there's really no way of telling, I mean, until we kick it up and see, we get everything turned over, because we don't, have no idea. Ever since it was built, we've never been able to, nobody's turned anything over to say there is, get it going. We're still, I think, it pretty still was that you had gotten, wanted somebody to turn it over, and we're kinda waiting on that, see where's, we've tested everything there's on our part.
Yeah, it looked good.
It was good, but other than it, it's still working and see what it's gonna do, no, sir, we have not. So that probably happened here the next two, three weeks, or even if we have to put, you know, some water or something in it ourselves and kinda pump it out, or whatever we need to do with that one.
And so, and we could also, so the new apartments wouldn't have to be on that four-inch section from that lift station? The new apartments can actually tie into that north end where it is a larger pipeline.
Right.
So that way, you're not diverting all that to that small, so basically, it'd be the store, the gas station, and the little plaza that would be, and like I said, we don't know if that would hold it or not at this point.
That being said, to your point, Mr. Mayor, if you move a little further down the line, we are increasing the capacity on the North Love Street lift station to handle more waste, however, we may have to visit, I think we only have a six-inch pipe from there.
Eight-inch, eight-inch.
So that may or may not be enough, so we're increasing capacity of the lift station, but we may have to look at.
I'm just worried about all of the new effluent being forced through a four-inch line and goes right through the middle of that apartment complex. And, you know, we don't wanna be pushing things up into apartments, because it will be a force-fed line for a waste. I don't know, I have not been on the site, so, anyway, just something to think about, be aware of. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Or at least have a plan B in place, Robert, if anything. Worst case scenario, just have a plan, just prepare for the worst-case scenario, that way we're prepared of anything.
All right, any further questions? All right, Ms. Ball.
Mayor and Commissioners, good evening. So I did get a phone call from the people that had the street light installed between Cottonwood and Dogwood on Seventh Street. They were very happy we installed that light and said they had calls from the neighbors, everybody's pleased with how that light has illuminated the area. So that helped out immensely, thank you for that. And then I'm preparing grants, uh, on the TPF grants that I usually put through, this year I can only submit one maintenance grant that usually we were able to submit to, um, so I'm gonna have to move the different things around, but I do have other grants that I could possibly move some of our roads to, so I can still try to get as many of them, or get it as possible this year. I have a report to give everybody, um, just something to share with you guys, our local disc offers and how they're making Sheperdell Park look to the nation, uh, this is a, this is a tracking system through professional disc off players. Um, so when you look at the report, you can see that, you know, we're the thirtieth most-played course in New Mexico. Uh, there is over 75 courses in the state of New Mexico, so that's, that's a good number. Just the different, you know, there have been 621 hours spent on our course. Several other just interesting facts, uh, just to let you know that that course is being used. And I know our local disc offers, I just wanna give a shout-out to them for promoting the events there. And, um, we've had people travel from as far as 500 miles, over 500 miles away to come play our course, so. Just a little tidbit I wanted to share with you guys, the, the disc guys let me in on, uh, just so we know Sheperdell is important. We do have a lot of people that enjoy it on the weekends. And then, um.
I bet you, uh, per capita, I bet you're a lot higher than that, though.
Huh?
I bet you per capita, if they look at it, we're a lot higher.
Maybe so?
Yeah, because if we're comparing with Hubble Creek and us, you know, they're gonna have to do us, but per capita, most likely.
Oh, yeah, for smaller cities our size, yeah, we're definitely up there. And it is due to our disc off association that we have in town, they really do promote. And they go out there and they help keep things cleaned up around the course and things, so. Then just, uh, I'd like to thank EDC Director Evelyn for her assistance in the Albertson's project. I know we wouldn't be near as far along on this if she hadn't put ears working on it, and she already brought up the rubber thing, so. That's all I have for this evening, I have any questions?
Questions? Hear none, thank you. All right. Excuse me, sorry. Brings us to our public comment time. At this time, uh, we invite you to come to the podium, if you do, please, uh, state your name. Take three minutes or less and tell us what you would like us to hear, and we invite anyone that wants to come up this evening, come up now. Nobody's jumping up.
One, two, three, I see.
Please just turn on action items. First one, discussion of city business license, Ms. Heim.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, we are here to provide an update and share some concerns we are running into during the process of business licenses. Laura, with code enforcement, will be presenting you a couple of their concerns. Richie, our fire marshal, will discuss the importance of yearly fire inspections, et cetera. In the past, businesses would only get inspection done when they first came to register their license. Over the past month, I have met with code enforcement, our fire marshal, planning and zoning, our city clerk and city manager, and we are working together to create a more efficient, transparent, and business-friendly system. Our goal is to ensure that businesses can operate smoothly while maintaining compliance with city regulations. We appreciate your time and look forward to sharing some updates and answering any questions you may have. Um, and at this time, first, that will start with the presentation will be Ms. Laura.
Hello?
We're gonna have to get you a seat to take.
I'm telling you.
All right.
Okay, so, um, we have been running into a lot of, um, issues with businesses, and good and, and bad parts. So, um, Commissioners, you do know that you're the governing party here, the body of the city of Livingston. Okay, you do have the right to revoke a license, if anything comes about. Okay, um, the business license, uh, registration fee is only $25. A lot of the business owners that haven't got a business license at all, weren't aware that they needed to get a business license, which is only $25. Mobile business is a $100 fee, just for the application.
No, let's back our stuff right there. The very first, is it a one-time or is it a yearly?
It's a yearly.
Okay, okay, so they, they have to do a complete application every year?
Yes, because it's a, it's a renewal. The biggest issue is the building numbers, which is the address numbers, they are not posted up. If we are requiring the residents and citizens of Livingston to have their, their address numbers on their homes, um, business owners also should have them on their buildings. There's, uh, quite a few that don't have their address numbers. The same with RV mobile home parks. The issue here would be, oh boy, where should I start on this one? Right, Crystal? This one, a lot of the RV mobile home parks, they can't, they cannot pay the engineer drawn, because it's costly. So we're having to give them a extension with that part of the application in order for them to get their state license to keep running the RV, RV mobile home parks. But then it comes to, okay, everybody does a part which is, you know, the planning zoning, where the, the square footage and all of the RV mobile parks. Fire mar-, the fire department do their own, and then myself, well, I'm like the last, the last department to come into the picture, because everybody has either approved or gave everybody like a, um, a date to come up to code. But then here, here's plan, here's, um, code enforcement division that's, okay, you haven't, you haven't received your engineering, your license, um, plan. So where do we open that, you know, do we leave it as is? It's been like that for, how everybody stays with 2013, and they go on and on. So that's one of the biggest issues there, um.
So, and noted on the, uh, mobile home park, so mobile home park has to pass code and zoning permitting prior to be licensed. Um, and that's where we work with them on the engineering to try to bring them up to code and get their engineering. We've had several small parks that have done it, uh, we have a few small parks that have the engineering, but then they can't afford the cost of moving the utilities of that, so they're still working on that process. Don't have a problem with the parks that are working with us, uh, but we do have parks that have had nothing engineering and have not wanted to try to work with us on what they're going to do, and we've had some of these parks for many years. And that's where, and some of them have not been licensed and are still operating.
Because we gave them a second chance, a third chance, and so on.
So, yeah, when do we cut that off?
Is this a question for Commissioner at this time?
No, actually, we're just listening. There wasn't a thought to change the process until I found out there was an ordinance that we can't, so we may have to address it. It's, our thought was, is for them to, not just RV parks, businesses in general, bring in a packet to apply for a business license, we review the packet, we do all our inspections, and then we would issue a business license, but.
Well, that's how it is for RV parks and cannabis.
Right.
But regular businesses, they.
They just get a license.
The code is, says, they just get a license, and only you guys can revoke that. On the mobile home, that's why I said there's some RP, RV parks that have operated without license, because I failed their exit, I failed their inspections. They don't have a license, but they're still operating.
And I said, how's that fair to the ones that are compliant?
That is not at all.
Right, exactly, so something needs to be stepped up, something needs to be done, definitely.
And this is where we've been meeting and we decided, moving forward, we have to present it to our commission because of the ordinance. We just can't run with it and, you know, we wanted to present that, make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah, because if we allow them to get away with it, then what's to say that the ones that are compliant are gonna say, well, you know what? Everybody else is doing it, let's do it too. Can't have that.
That's the way it's been for years. So just to let you all know, there's a couple of them that are gonna probably be needing to be shut down.
Well, they need to become compliant, plain and simple.
It's, it's gonna, Laura's, the way I understand it, Laura's gonna have to come before the city commission, as she does with one of the houses that we tear down, present her case, and then it's up to the government body, because in effect, we're telling them, we're gonna put them out of business, we're gonna prevent them from practicing business.
And that's fine, that's fine, you know, there's a lot of things you can look at, you know, are they working with us? You know, are they taking steps? And I understand, you gotta look at each case individually, because they are, they are that. But, uh, I said, if they're working, if they're going in the right direction, trying, we can understand, trust me.
Some of it's years.
Yeah, but it comes, comes a point.
Flagrantly violating the ordinance.
Comes a point.
Yeah, so in the RV code, we do have a right to, uh, violations, um, we can, the city can write them a cease and desist order, but they have to shut down their park at least, but, um, so that is.
So, and I believe you all have done it here on South Love, and I don't wanna, you know, point out, there was an RV park that was shut down back.
It was on Jake, the one on Jake was the cease and desist order, and they're still operating. So it's just a matter of, code really has to stay on top of that in order for that cease and desist to actually become a legal matter.
But we're just letting you all know that that's what we're gonna do, is come up out in front of you guys and let you know what's going on, and that way you got, you all can decide if it's, you know, another time.
By all means, bring them on.
All right. So then we'll do some.
I think that's the end of the presentation, that's what we wanted to hear.
Well, I'm not, I'm speaking for myself, the other Commissioners can speak for themselves, so, but you're doing a good job.
Back, back, you passed them, you passed them all. Okay. Where did yours start?
These are a few other businesses here in, um, town. This is what, what we're running into, and it's a lot of work, I mean, if we're looking at residential homes, this is business, businesses, I mean, there are RV parks the same, but they do come in compliance with the, you know, scattered junk and all kinds, and weeds, you know, you, a lot of people say, oh, it's just weeds, yeah, but then, if you can see, the weeds aren't, you know, very presentable. So this building right here is down Avenue D. As you can see, they don't, they haven't had their address numbers also for many years. This one was a taco stand. During the weekend, I was called out, um, I guess their operating hours were from 7:30 PM to midnight. They did not have hand-washed station, um, they had, that ice chair is the very one, you see their full device with their meat. I mean, it's salmon all over that place. I just, like, I don't know, they didn't have a business license, but most importantly.
So what did you do? My question is.
Um, what did I do? I, it was an emergency, so I took administrative decision to tell them to present to me their business license in hand. They did not have that, so then I cited them and I had them shut down. This is, um, uh, the alleyway all the way down from Bill Avenue B. These are the business buildings, so there's a lot of trash that came away, there's a cart, and I believe, I'm not even sure where that cart came from, but it's from a Walmart one.
I don't know Bob's one.
Bob's are blank.
But. I've had a lot of complaints, a lot of comments, anonymous ones, um, and as it gets cleaned up, here's our manhole, a sewer manhole, it's being covered in trash, and, you know, then we ask ourselves, why are sewers backed up? This is the other items that are in back of the, um, the buildings. This is another store which continues to have the scattered, scattered trash.
That's the teenagers coming across there, geared to you.
And everybody says the same, but, you know, there's a trash can right there, there's two. So what happens when a business? So what happens when a business owner is in non-compliance, is in non-compliance well? Um, the neighborhood, you know, residential homes right behind all that business buildings. Um, there's a public school nearby even within maybe a hundred feet or less. Um, there's more scattered trash. I mean, we just got trash all over Lexington, we all need to step up as business owners and, you know, residential. Um, so the yellow building, the yellow green building is, you know, is, this is what we come. Do we, do we want the city of Lexington to live like this for a long time? I know there's buildings that are maybe historic or, you know, but now we're 2025, maybe they make it look better and, you know, um, be proud of our city. So in the other building, I am not going to throw anybody under the bus, but this business owner was in non-compliance for many years. He finally, this past week has become in compliance and I want to thank him. His name is Alexander. Um, he, as he, if you pass by there, it's, it's like raining and they're still doing, um. So thank you, Mark Alexander, for cleaning and upgrading your business. And the next slide. Um, this is all the information you would need if you have overfilling, if your bins are overfilled. Um, waste management would be your best first contact. Um, then city hall, which is the water department. And then lastly, code enforcement division, if you have no other, um, way of contacting waste management or how to, um, pick up your trash or scattered trash for your business. Um, they do come out and they do an extra pickup if you'd like and there's no excuse for calling in the, your overfilled bins. And that is all, if you all have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, you could just give Kevin to Richie report. So Mr. Richie, I've been learning a lot, a lot of stuff and he's just going to talk the part of his department, I would say.
Um, Commissioner, Mayor, City Manager. Um, again, so she covered a lot of stuff, um, even on the fire inspection side. So even the numbers on businesses, that's should have been code for the past 30 years. That's been, that's not my thing that would just let slide. Um, since I have taken over the position, I've started building a program from the ground up to keep up with the annuals and annual inspections and as well as complaints. Um, right now we are, what I'm running into is a lot of businesses just haven't had a fire and life safety inspection in several years. It's no, no fault of them just not having personnel and having the position to. Now that I am able to go in, I've been a little bit of kickback, but I am working with a lot of the business owners and customer, or I said customer, but business owners and building owners to work in on getting an annual inspection done. Um, something that I personally feel would be on business renewals, if we did kind of require inspections done before a business renewal, that would help, um, the businesses be more compliant. Right now, we did notice that it is only from January 1st to March 15th that business renewals are allowed. With that, if you land bought a business or got a business license on December 1st, you're having to repay that business license all over again a month later. The big thing with the annual inspections with ISO, the fire department's doing ISO this actual month. Uh, they do request how many inspections have been done, what type of businesses, what type of occupancies as well as what type of fire and life safety education with the occupancies have been done. So I am trying to fetch up and provide the last three years' worth of those inspections to help our ISO. Because with our ISO going lower, the business and the homeowners insurance rates do drop. We're looking at a three right now and hopefully maybe the next, next time we can drop down to a two, uh, just even with these programs in place. I did just complete the fire plans examiner. What that's going to help is if you got new construction being built, I can look at the blueprints of the fire prevention, so your sprinklers and your lighting, your egress pathways, your doors, and making sure that those are compliant to afford the buildings to be constructed. Other than that, she, she covered most of everything that we all had to say.
And a lot of the stuff with the plans also, the state has to, uh, agree to the plans as well, so it's not just the fire department, but they have to be cleared through the state as well, so. Do all new businesses have to have a, an inspection?
Not all new businesses, all business, of, actually all occupancies, which can also be considered. So we have the state doing, the churches, the schools, so the hospitals, all, any, any type of structure, your warehouses, anything that is a commercial, anything that is non-residential needs to have an inspection.
Do they have to be done annually? No, I, I just.
And yeah, the new businesses, like if they come in for new business registration, that, that inspection's all automatically turned into.
I was thinking it was.
Code, name, and, uh, fire.
And when like a new business is being built, like when Albertson's gets built, like there are different steps where, where they complete and we go in and we inspect.
It's similar tomorrow, I have an inspection just on the hospital, one week to the hospital that's doing a new construction. So that's considered new construction, any type of demolition, I should be doing inspection, considering new construction, uh, inspection as well.
And then these buildings also, which they can vouch as far as, uh, anything over a 50% remodel of a building, then it has to be brought up to the current fire and life safety codes.
Has a lot to do with construction codes and fire codes and everything, substantial improvements.
There's a lot that goes into it.
So that's another thing on the renewal licenses is we need to find out, or did you guys do it? Because a lot of times they don't turn in that they did this work in their building. Um, so an inspection triggered by us lets us see if they did that or not and then did they come up to the new code with that much of a new. You know, we, once you hit 50% on your substantial improvements, you're supposed to bring up all your codes in your building.
All right. Questions?
One last thing, we have a very active, active chat. They're all of us in it and they love to see me, me and Michelle had a signal's business license so they could do their inspections and our phones have been going off. What, what is it? I know you love it.
It's like getting water.
Ding, ding, ding. So we're all staying, staying aware of, of the things though.
Why don't we share email also?
Oh, we both do.
Yeah. Thanks, Lily.
Well, let's say we talked about also is y'all could consider it. I don't know if we wanted to stay with the January to March or do it all year long, which is kind of take the burden off of everybody pushing everything.
If you're going to do January to March and you've got a lot of inspections.
A lot.
Somebody's going to be tied up. But then the policy or the, what is it?
The ordinance would have to be changed.
Yes.
Because, yeah, I mean, to me, the way it should be is if you come in in December and get a business license, you don't renew it till December and the following year. You should get it for here, should be an anniversary. Yes, in turn helps everybody with the inspection. Yes.
Yeah, you pay for the full business license in December. January 1, you pay for another full business license in January.
As it currently is.
Yeah, and so I know that's how I, me and Miranda had visited about having our code looked at by an actual code writer to read back some of these out of date codes. Um, it was something I wanted to present in next year's budget to have our code rewritten because there's many of those antiquated and old codes.
Right, and is that an ordinance?
Yes.
It's from January to March?
Yes, it is in the business license and code, that ordinance is in that code.
Another question? Here we go, all right. Thank you. All right, discussion with finance director pay range, Mr. Roberts. Um, the city manager and I, um, upon trying to come up with a, um, something to send out, we discussed the pay range, pay range. And so I want, I said, well, the commission doesn't have to set it, but I wanted to at least get some input if the commission is so requested to kind of direct the city manager on what are we going to offer?
And Mr. Mayor, if I may add, in the meantime, I've done a study, finance director salary comparison by surrounding municipalities to kind of help the commission. And as you said, just to give us, we're going to host for this, hopefully this week, latest next week. We're going to beef up our description, which I can explain in a second. But that gives you a snapshot of some of the surrounding municipalities, what they pay. And this is not off of ID or head hunting websites. This is actual people in current positions. And it's off of government salary dot com. And I just point out, you know, if you took, if you look at Lee County, they pay a decent amount. I would just say that it took them, I believe, about six months to find the director that they just hired. So it's gonna, but we want to do a better job advertising. We want to kind of focus down on our requirements or asks and maybe get more competitive with salary. Um, some of the things that I spoke to the HR director about today, I think that we should go out and focus on. Number one, experience with Tyler in code, strongly preferred. Experience with gathering materials for audits, preferred. Experience with budget preparation, strongly preferred. Experience with the Mexico government's financial reporting, a plus. Must have bank statement reconciliation experience. And we'll be supervising a staff of four, so managerial experience is strongly preferred. And I think this will help us identify a more, you know, a better target, save us some time. But I, I do think we have to be competitive with salary just to attract a higher caliber of person to, I'll just say that last time, as you know, we initially went out at 75 to 100,000. We ended up hiring the previous finance director at 110. So we're kind of in the middle, I guess, but I put in populations that are also a good reference.
In my research, one of the things that was brought up to me is basically the size of the, the amount of money that the entity, um, you know, has flowed through, has a great deal to do with, yeah, the, the salary range.
We have 19 departments in a budget of 39 million and a lot of account line items.
Do you have a proposal you would, at this point?
I think, yeah, we should probably look at either the 110 to 130 range or maybe the 120 to the $140,000 range. Um, that may seem a little ambitious, I just, I, I think it'll attract hopefully caliber of person that would be better suited. It may not, like I said, it took the county over six months and they're apparently paying their finance director 163,000 or work a year ago. So, and as I've said, I don't care if that person makes more than I do, I can sleep at night.
I think, uh, if they meet the minimum requirements, 110 sounds fair, but if they have like 10 years' experience or I think anything above that, then that's something you can present to the board after you, you find your candidate. But I think bottom, I mean, just, just what you mentioned earlier, 110 sounds fair if they have experience, because some may only be an intern or two or three years' experience, but anything above that, I'd like to see someone that has little.
Would you like to offer a range that, and that way depending on their experience, we can kind of adjust within that range? I didn't know 20,000 dollar range or, rather than just putting one finite figure on it, I, I didn't know, gives us a little wiggle room.
Yeah, the minimum requirement is 110, meets the minimum requirement is 110. Anything above that is negotiable or something like that. But I know it's going to be hard to find, just know that, that's for sure. And I hate to train, that's the only thing about it, is I hate to train because it makes one year down the line, find our six months down the line, they're not getting.
Yeah, the mayor and I talked about how it would be great if we could find a local person. Chances are better that they stay. And, you know, I spoke to Shannon and Veronica. We're really going to do a better job advertising this time. Obviously use the municipal league, but get the message out there.
Tough job.
In a discussion with some of the EDCLC over the weekend, they are currently help assisting three different entities looking for finance directors. The, the Hobbs School, which is the largest, uh, I guess it's, it's the largest employer in, in our area, uh, ourselves, and I believe the city of Eunice. It, it was one of the smaller municipalities. Um, but anyway, so there's a lot of looking going on right now to fill these positions. And to find a qualified, someone that has a lot of the attributes that we're looking for, government accounting and Tyler, good luck with that one.
The only one that used Tyler's school, so I wonder if we would switch to what clearly, because I hated Tyler and all of his schools, they just was making my.
But I think, I think not only that, but let's say worst case scenario, we're going back to the worst case scenario, we have to train, you know, are we going to pay someone like Ed to come in and train that individual? Because that may be our end result that we, like the mayor said, there's a lot of people seeking these candidates out and they're going to go somewhere where they're going to pay more than what we're going to pay definitely if they have, if they have the experience. So what is plan B? Plan B would be spring someone like Ed, but we'd have to know that we're going to, that's going to be another cost on top of that. How long we, we're willing to train this individual? We're giving him six months to a year and that's additional cost. And would they be willing to take like 90,000 and train, or 80,000, 85 and then?
Train them.
Yeah, train them till they meet it and then probably six months to a year down the line, ante up and, and determine, based on performance and recommendations from Ed. I'm just using him as an example, uh, go with it. You know, I, I think something, I, we have to look at an option because I know we have to come up with something, we can't just ride this for a year and, or six months because we've got audits, we've got budget, we've got a lot going on.
One of the things that I'd like to bring the commission's attention is because of our delays, we, we still have to use the COG as our physical agent and they, especially, if you just take the capital outlay last year, which was 2. something million dollars, and they get 3% of that, and there's another 60,000 that we pay above and beyond just the salary of any one of these individuals and then any training or any other outside entities that we bring in. So this, this job is a lot and we already pay a lot. So this, this job is a lot, and we already pay a lot. So we just need to figure out how we want to best invest our money, or the taxpayer money into it.
Do you want to give us a little, the Hiring Department, a little bit of flexibility to offer a range?
Well, I think, okay, let's just...
There's a shortage of auditors, Finance Directors, bookkeepers, CPAs. You know, this Office of the State Auditor has a shortage of auditors. I mean, just to kind of attract potential candidates. And gives us a little bit, maybe a wider net to pass.
I would love to, as long as we know what the bear... Okay, let's just say, the very floor, let's say is a hundred thousand. Okay? I'm sorry?
Ninety-five.
Okay, ninety-five. All right. Very poor. Okay. What are we asking for someone looking at ninety... Or for us to look at them at ninety-five? And then if we have, you know, by some miracle, somebody moves to Lovington, and they have all the qualifications, and they have fifteen years of governmental accounting, and they happen to somehow know Tyler, and all of those, okay...
A unicorn.
Very true. Very true. You know, but do we want to... Do we just want to stay with a range that's a reasonable range? And then if that happens, kind of take the Commissioner's recommendation? Hey, bring it to us, and let's talk about it? I mean, I don't care. We'll give you the range, as long as you are going to apply it.
Everything goes by the Commission. I just didn't want to rule out that top possible candidate if they're out there by just going too low and just saying, well, we're only going to advertise at, let's say, ninety-five, rather than if you go maybe ninety-five to a hundred and twenty, do you... Does that person give a... You know, that person that wasn't going to look at under a hundred, now they're like, oh, well, maybe I can get a hundred and twenty. Let me at least apply.
You know, the county does upwards of nearly half a billion a year, so... And they're at one sixty-three. So I would say we're below that. My goal would be maybe a hundred and fifty, unless a unicorn walks in, you know?
I would say one thirty. One thirty's... I mean, you better have some credentials, because the last... I agree. Skip a word. Show that we went through.
I'm...
Yeah. You better have some credentials to get anything past with that. Because ninety-five, we're training somebody. One thirty, I mean, run-of-the-mills, average, everyday degree, got another stuff. Anything beyond that, you better be that unicorn.
Okay. So if we go ninety-five and one thirty, that's, that's what we're going to... And then if, if somebody throws an application at us and it's whatever, then just bring it down.
Just a walk-on water is all I got.
Well, I understand that. But at the same time, if we get zero between ninety-five and thirty, or one thirty, excuse me, then we need to address this fairly quickly and...
Well, I mean, if you can't get somebody in that range right there, that basically lets you know that it wouldn't matter what you're... You're just stealing then, and then you're handicapping us in a way that... No, I've already been over the barrel once. No, that's all right. There's no bottom.
And what if the Commission agrees? We can do what we did last time. We can put a board together to evaluate all, along with the HR Director, myself, and any Commissioner that wants to be part of it, evaluate all the applications, select maybe the top two or three or four, bring it to the Commission for interviews, and you guys, of course, have the final say on this position. So, I mean, depending on the number of resumes or applications we received, we can put together that initial screening process and give you our top two or three. Or if you just want to put your trust in the Board, we can bring you the top first one, and you can evaluate that person's, whichever way you want. But ninety-five to one thirty, you're giving us a nice wide range, depending on that person's experience, and maybe attracts that person that's looking for one-twenty-five or above and has a little bit more experience, which equals less training at the back end.
I would also like to put a timeframe on it, though. You know, I mean, let's... Whenever you start this process, then if we're going to give four to six weeks, let's see what we're getting in four to six weeks, and say, okay, we haven't gotten two, one qualified. Then we'll even make the ninety-five, or whatever it is. So we better reevaluate and then come with a different...
And we'd be happy to put together kind of a spreadsheet of the applications we do get, based on experience and what they're looking for. That way, we have to revisit it, have some information.
Is that enough at this point?
That is great. Ninety-five to one thirty, I think is a big enough window. It allows us some flexibility, I think. We're going to attract some decent, I hope. I don't know about four to six weeks. Hopefully, maybe two months to three months.
I don't want to wait six months, and then you come back... Not you. And you come back... It comes back to us. We still don't even have anybody that would...
We will update you.
You know, so...
Hundred percent.
I would say if we don't have any viable candidates in less than forty-five days, then you probably need to readdress the situation.
Exactly.
And move forward.
And in the meantime, we'll look on the financials, the audit. And then get involved on that.
Absolutely.
Appreciate the guidance.
Thank you. All right. Bring in further before we move on. Here it is. Discussion of ATVs on city streets. Commissioner Trujillo.
Yes, sir. I was approached by some business owners here, local business owners, asking why ATVs are not allowed on the streets of Lovington. We met up, and we had some discussions on the pros and cons of it. Also brought back a little history when the three of us were here on the Board, and we... It was presented to us by Mr. Dunlap, still, yeah, Mr. Dunlap. And we did turn it down, and the reasons why the Board was not in favor of it at the time. And so they kind of like, it was lengthy discussion, and kind of like put a small plan together. And I told them, I said, well, this evening, come forward, and we'll have a good discussion on it. And about a month from now, after everybody thinks about it, have a... Put it on action item and see what the Board thinks. And so, you guys want to come forward?
Oh, wait, wait. Hell, no. Hell, no. For the same reasons as always. A, there's nowhere to ride. There's only public land, and everybody got pissed when I ride my dirt bike on their public land. What's going to happen when they go through the park? Well, if they get to, I can throw out my dirt bike in the park. Half the kids that go by my house don't have a helmet, don't have a driver's license, and the UTV that they're driving sixty miles an hour down my street? No. We already have enough stuff. I don't care if it's a golf cart, dirt by UTV mule, no. I stand against it. I won't listen for it. Tell them I can ride my dirt bike down Avenue D, and him lay that and he going...
I think you can.
Without being in the parade. And they don't even allow that in the parade anymore.
I think you can ride your dirt back downtown, as long as it has a license and pass the thing.
But that's it. It's got a license, it's got a registration, and you can get those on UTVs. I get that. But you can't really ride them. Can you imagine how many kids would be taking a UTV to school? No. All I can do that, it's legal now.
But the thing...
They're not licensed, though.
It still doesn't matter. You have nowhere to truly ride that vehicle.
In our streets.
No. It's a street. It's a UTV designed to be off-road, not running up and down the street, on a highway street. I disagree. You can't change my mind. There's nothing you can say, absolutely nothing. You can't tell me that's going to make the kids a better driver. It's not going to make the kids think like that.
Mr. Gandy, you're only one vote.
I understand, but I'm still... I want people to know how strongly I feel against this.
No, I understand.
Why don't you get your dirt bike registered and insure it out, and you can drive it on the street?
Not my dirt bike. Now, I can get my adventure bike, but that's a different bike altogether. It's registered, just everything like that. But how many kids do I see riding the parking lot at the junior high or Tater School without a helmet? Every day.
Why don't they get a ticket, though?
Those kids are stupid.
Because we got four hundreds and something on the calls for people that can't draw laws.
But you know, the thing about it...
They shouldn't make it bad on us that are registered and insured.
But you have nowhere to ride.
To go to the store.
Why do you need that? You have a car.
Got to fire up a diesel truck to go to the store.
You bought the diesel truck, should have bought a gas. That's what the police department just did. Man, this is too high.
I don't understand the difference when a, when a person doesn't have insurance on the car and drives a car.
They're not going to have insurance on the UTV either. And they run over your truck, you're going to be pissed.
But I just, I just can't see the comparison of, of anything. You know, it's just like a motorcycle. What's the more dangerous, a motorcycle or a UTV? You know, a motorcycle is. I mean, you look at, you look at... You got a motorcycle, you got racing downtown, some of these motorcycles, you got... But you just can't put one incident and have ATVs say they're no good, or because you've seen something that's no good. I mean, it's just, well, it's what, take that same concept with vehicles. Okay, nobody has insurance. One person don't have insurance on cars, no more cars downtown. I mean, we could do all kinds of stuff like that. But, but I want to look at the big picture and say that what does Lovington have to offer? Jow does it, Eunice does it, Las Cruces does it, which is four times as big as us. Ridosa does it, but...
Ridosa has nowhere to ride. How tough is somewhere to ride? Lovington has nowhere to ride.
There are a lot of country roads back out there.
Just go to Second Street, go to the gym, go to the grocery store, just something.
But even at that, they could not out of town.
You know, us being insured, we use it for the, to go up hunting. Once a year, you know, we're fully insured, we're registered, we got to, you got to be all that to be in compliance with National Forest.
Yeah.
And as far as just to pay that, just for it to sit in your carport, it's like a pill over my adventure bike. I ride it twice a year if I'm lucky. If I'm not taking it out to the streets, get insured for the streets, and you can just be like us.
It is insured for the street, but that's what I'm saying. My adventure bike is, is registered for the street. But it's the simple fact that I don't ride that often. It's a choice. Exactly right. Just like it's a choice for me not to want to pass the UTV. It just, it galls me.
And that's why it's like, of course, you're going to look at it for the bad, like, picture of it. Of course, you're going to say, these kids, this, this, and that. But how many kids have Mustangs and all those high-performance cars pilling out in the schools?
Same. It's the same thing, yeah.
It's what I'm saying. It's going to be prejudice against one, one vehicle. You don't want to say it's all... I mean, that's what I'm saying. There's so many negatives in everything we do in life.
I mean, I lived in Tatum for most of my life. I got at least five tickets I know of for riding an unlicensed vehicle in Tatum. You know, so, yeah. My kid got a ticket in, same thing, riding on Love Street, you know? I've got a burr, it's there, it's implanted, but I'm just going to argue with the... Disagree with you.
We could just fall under the, what is it, the traffic that, you know, the Mandatory Financial Responsibility Act, you know, the Motor Vehicle Act, it got to be registered. You know, like, there shouldn't be no problem. If you're registered, and if you got insurance, they pull you over, here's my, here's my paperwork, or there's nothing, there's nothing.
It's just...
We can agree to disagree on.
I understand where...
You know, you're going to look at these kids about like, oh, yeah, they're going to this... Well, they shouldn't be making it bad for us that are just trying to go...
Can everybody in the audience please quiet down? We can't hear him speaking.
You know, it's just, we're just trying to do something else for this community, you know? With the City of Eunice, it's been very convenient for them, and that's all we ask is just, you know, we'll at least start off by limiting daytime hours. Daytime hours. And then as far as, of course, being in compliance with the Motor Vehicle Act, you're insured, registration, and just going from point A to point B, just within this community, there's really not much going on around here. As much as, you know, there hasn't really been anything changed here, a model life.
I disagree with that part, but...
Get something, so instead of seeing them all just parked under people's carport, if they want to be able to use them out in the streets, then go to the motor vehicle, get it inspected, get your insurance, you know, have a licensed driver. It should just follow, it's like you driving a car, a truck, motorcycle, it should just be all under the same thing. And that's all I ask is just, you know, like, if you really want to be out just driving, just to go... We know it's saying that, you know, it'll take you fifteen minutes to get across town, so it's just the convenient way just to get from here to the store or to the gym. That's all we ask, you know? We're, we're really committed to, committed, like, to educate our community as well. Like the do's and don'ts. Get them together.
So express that, express that to me a little better. Because you say you're committed to expressing the safety of those vehicles to the community. So as an organization, what are you going to offer the citizens? Or is there a course they need to take before they register that?
Yes, sir.
And then can that, can that be taken from that vehicle if they let their kid go down, spin a donut in the...
Correct. And that's where it falls in within the parent, knowing that their kid isn't a licensed driver, then it'll just fall right back under them. They should get punished for knowing that their kid isn't... Well, it's like it's stolen car, too, so, yeah, there you go.
But I just, and the, and the point I'm trying to make is that, man, ain't no, nothing perfect out there. We got uninsured motors, we got unlicensed motors, we have motorcycles streaming downtown, we got hot rods screeching everywhere, doing donuts. But we're not taking that away, you know? But these individuals, they're not riding downtown, and they're trying to make an example of themselves of the UTV, and then here we are yelling at them. And I think it's unfair that, that, you know, they're here to make a presentation and make a clean argument about it, when there's so much other stuff going on. And I think the bad part about it, it just seems like that's the way we are in society. One person messes up, everybody pays for it. And I feel like this group, you know, they have a good idea. They were talking about just daylight hours only, let us, give us a chance just daylight. We won't do it at night, and statistically, after one year, how are we doing? Or how's the citations? How's the police reports, so forth? If it looks like we got a clean thing, and we did this. And my argument is also, we did this with, with beer gardens. I remember we did that beer garden thing. Man, that was uproar. We had this whole field of people. After the statistics come out at the end of the year and so forth, no fights broke out, no nothing, and we end up having beer garden after beer garden, and everything turned out fine. It's just giving them the opportunity to make a case, and that's the way I feel. And I appreciate you guys coming forward. I know, you know, and I knew that we disagreed last time with it, the group up here with Mr. Dunlap. But I just feel that, you know, I think sometimes society just takes away everything from everybody just because of one individual, one incident, and it affects everybody. So we, it takes our, takes more and more freedom away from us as citizens. And before long, we're not going to be able to do nothing. And so, but I just, that, that was part of the presentation.
Yes, sir. So, yeah, that's all we ask is just to give the opportunity to, you know, that we could show and prove that they can be responsibly operated in a safe manner. And just, you know, come back and reevaluate within a time to see statistically how many citations or what, what was the case. So we ask is, as long as we can just be able to use our UTVs just as an insured motorist.
And the city could put its own, however it wants to, in there, because, like, you look at a boat license, anybody that's born after the year of nineteen eighty-five has to go through a boating class. And anybody under the age of eighteen has to go through a UTV class.
Yes, sir.
And like, my daughter had to do all that in order to be able to ride, just to go deer hunting.
Correct.
And it's state law. You can't ride them, even if the city passed it, on a state highway.
Right now. How are they going to cross Main and Beach?
It has to be in the city. You cross, but you can't ride up and down. So, I mean, the city could put its own stipulations on, this is what we require you to do.
Okay.
And the state.
Okay, first of all...
No, I'm not y'all.
No, I'm not, I'm not taking it that way, though. No. Okay, this is a discussion item. And you see that there are definitely two opinions in this.
Correct.
So, and I appreciate Commissioner Trujillo, you know, he is, basically, he is making your cause.
Yes, sir.
And because it kind of jumped into a debate before you really got to, is there something other than your want for this with it you'd like to bring up right now? And then my request is make, put it into a document that Commissioner Trujillo can then distribute to them, and then we can evaluate this a little bit further. And I'm going to tell you, I'm... And then we can evaluate this a little bit further, and I'm gonna tell you, I'm, I'm on the fence right now, because I see his point, and I also hear what he's saying as far as losing the ability to add something that may or may not be a benefit, okay? So, you, you have, I'm gonna give you a couple of minutes to just state, you know, your, your cause, uh, anything that we haven't talked about. And then, uh, if there's not, I mean, you can just say, okay, I'll, you know, this is what I'll prepare and, and give to you, and we'll go from there. 'Cause if, if this is, this is all it is anyway, it's just a discussion, you already see, it's gonna be heated no matter what.
Yes, sir, totally understood. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, or just...
And your name, I am so sorry.
Valencia, yes, sir.
Eric, Eric Valencia.
Sorry about all that, we were just coming here to, you know, request, you know, to adopt a ordinance that's already in place within the city of Eunice, yeah. And, you know, just to give us the opportunity, that's all we ask is to get an opportunity to show that we could, we could operate these responsibly in our city streets. On top of that, that's when we'll, we'll, uh, commit ourselves in, uh, educating our community, you know, through the social medias, newspaper, community pages. Even if we have to gather up somewhere and just whoever wants to attend that has ATV, we'll educate them on that. And as far as underage, they'll have to go through that, that training if they want to do all that good stuff. And, uh, not only that, we also stand, will stand with the LPD, you know, to be in compliance, be in compliance just like any other vehicle. And, uh, uh, let's see, and, uh, as far as just asking the opportunity to do so, to operate within a, a, a period of time for just daytime hours only? See how that goes, just give us, give us that opportunity, y'all could please, just, just to put them to use more than just the time that we really go out and use those vehicles for. And, uh, other than that, it's just, all I ask is just for opportunity for us to just show that we could operate these responsibly in a safe manner here in our city. And of course, you know, to ensure public safety would be our number one, to get that across our community, to really ensure and put that into perspective, like, this is what has to go. You know, we, we're here trying to get something going, something to better ourselves, just to ride our little buggy down the road or however it is. But just give us that, that opportunity to show you guys that we can make this work, that's all I ask.
Thank you.
And I think also, uh, as well as, uh, the parades, I mean, it was just, uh, parades, and it was daylight only, their requests were for daylight only. And to be able to, uh, be in the parades, 'cause, 'cause of, uh, nighttime would be, uh, Christmas parade.
I like the electric light parade.
Yeah, electric light parade, that was their...
Just a little more convenient, easier to light them up and all that good stuff.
Okay, Commissioner, again?
Hey, um, Chip, just for them, skip, Chip, sorry, wrong letters, wrong place. Where was that class given that you brought up today?
It's all on, it's online.
It's all online?
But it's an actual class.
I just wanted him to have that information, the easy access, I, I didn't know.
Yeah, she had to do the same thing to even ride the jet ski in the lake, she has to go through a class there, so there's all that.
Something I didn't know about, so I was, I was curious.
Another question I had, so basically, if they were allowed to ride in the streets, um, a lot of times when you're just hauling them to go to the mountains to go hunting or to the dunes, um, you're not purchasing gas usually within the city limits, you're purchasing gas when you get closer, because driving, hauling a full loaded, it just makes it worse. So, um, you know, you do have that benefit, um, also the fact of if they're just running to the store, they're not waiting for that one trip they take a week to go to Walmart. They're running to our little stores, spending more money here locally. Just a thought.
Well, by no, I'm sorry.
Suzanne, do you have anything to say about the insurance part of it?
Um, I just wanted to...
Do you want to say no?
Say no, just say your name. Hi, I'm Susanna R. V. Sue, and I am licensed in the state of New Mexico and the state of Texas to sell insurance, and I just wanted to throw out there, just for, um, economical purposes. Registrations on UTVs and ATVs for off-road use are different and different price, lower for off-road use, and recreational use only is a lower price than for on-street use. So that is also, and, I mean, that comes right back to the city, when it comes back, when it, uh, comes to insurance as well, they are insured, and those rates are significantly higher than just a registration one. Because they have to be insured as private passenger vehicles if they are for street legal use. Um, for recreational use, they're pretty affordable, I want to say for street use they are also, but they are rated as vehicles, and they are, um, rated, um, including the safety ratings that come with those vehicles. So, all of that is included, and, I mean, if it's sheer, it comes back to us.
Can I ask you one question, Suzanne? Okay, from past experience, all right, if, if it's a fifteen or sixteen-year-old person, depending if they've got no license, you know, basically, they pay at a higher rate. Uh, doesn't matter what vehicle they drive, okay, is that, would that also effectively be the same situation here?
If, um, a household has a useful driver, that is listed as a driver on their insurance policy, which they should if they are licensed, um, yes, those rates are considered on all of their, on their, on their policies. At least with State Farm, I can speak for our company, um, the vehicle that the youthful driver is assigned to is the one that has the greatest rate increase, but their age is considered on all vehicles. So, somebody that doesn't have youthful drivers, even though their driver, their youthful driver drives a 1992 Old Pickup, um, is kind of, somebody that doesn't have youthful drivers is gonna pay less for the same vehicles than those people. Um, just because, I mean, it's youthful drivers are, they're at a higher risk. And then, um, I'm originally from Las Cruces, um, I know ATVs, UTVs there are legal for legal use, and I've been in Lee County, um, and I consider Lee County my home since 2014. Um, but I do go back to Las Cruces often, um, usually every other weekend, or, um, at least once a month, and in the times that I'm out there, I mean, they've been legal since, I want to say about 2017, 2018. And quite honestly, since then, I've seen two on the road. It's not like they're legal and everybody's zooming in around them, it really isn't like that, it's literally like a convertible, like motorcycle use. I, I ride a motorcycle, yes, the top off, it really is like that, it's like they're just going to the Walmart down the street, and it really isn't like a madhouse with gay TVs and UTVs everywhere, I just wanted to throw that out there, and I believe, um, Eunice is like that too. Um, they're, the, the mayor there is actually very, very for it, and, um, he did, um, some things about like incidents and stuff, and they haven't had any accidents since they legalized it. But I just wanted to show that there is something between a big city and then a very small town, but, yeah, they're not very, you'd be surprised, some people really actually go out on there. It's just more for the people that do like to use them, that are responsible with their stuff.
So who would be permitting these to be able to be driven on our streets?
Be even through the motor vehicle, if it's registered, if they pass inspection, for it to actually be on the road, you have to have your signal lights.
Right, okay, because, because if this did come in front of us, and it was to pass, one thing that I would recommend is that you receive a permit that's highly visible. Because you know, anyone that's everyone, if it's for the road or not, you're gonna drive it down the road. That if you can see that it has a permit on it, and you can say, okay, that's allowed on the road.
I think, I believe in Los Cruces, they do a plate, they do a recreational plate, and then like, actually, the ones that are for road use have regular...
Well, the thing is, when them, when they're driving past you 50 miles an hour, it's hard to get a plate number.
Well, we are not going 50 miles, and that's what...
And, no, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, because we do have ones who go up and down our road. And as far as being able to see if it's got a plate or not, you know, and I said, if you have to enforce it, I'm just looking at all parties.
Yes, and I, I completely agree on that, 'cause how many people, I've actually recently had people complain to me about their vehicles were registered, they have a plate, and then people steal their plates to put on their unlicensed, uh, unregistered vehicles. So I can see where that could, I, I completely see.
Right, and I'm not taking sides on anything, I just, I would just like it that it's visible, that you can see it and say, okay, they're good. You know, if somebody's going down the road, and let's say, my 85-year-old neighbor has an issue with it, I can say, they have a tag on there, they're good to go. Or if I don't see a tag on there, then I can say, okay, you got a legitimate dispute here, legitimate right, so, I'm just trying to look at both sides. 'Cause we have to weigh this in on both sides to come to a decision.
And I, I'm, um, or I, I, I share the same, I see it from both sides too, because I've been one of those that gets upset whenever there's a kid that's irresponsible and driving like hell.
A hundred percent.
Whether it's on a Mustang or whether it's on an ATV, I don't know there, so I sit there, and I mean, you know, we, we make our kids follow the laws and follow rules. So, um, one of the things that, um, Los Cruces is to is heavy fines, and I am all for that, like, I think that's one of the ways that you can hopefully, I mean, that's why...
Deter it, yeah.
That's why ordinances exist, to kind of like, you know, with fines imposed, but heavy fines, money for the city, whether it was an honest mistake that they didn't know about, they won't do it again for a $500 or a $1,000 fine. And if it's somebody that just doesn't care, then really, like, are these, how many people around have $1,000 to be splitting out for a fine just because they don't care? I'm just, I'm just out there, but, I just wanted to share my end on the, um, um, insurance and, um, state registration side, that those, they are, it's not like, because they already have insurance and registration, those are not the same as for legal road use. They do have to get an inspection, and then, um, those registration fees are higher, and the insurance is also higher for road use than for recreational use.
Thank you very much. Uh, I just want to kind of tell you that don't be impatient, because as you've heard, the city has a lot of things that we're trying to look at right now, okay? What I do want you to understand is that it imposes further on our, our police force, it's gonna impose a little bit more, and we're gonna have to make sure, before we ever agree to do it, that everybody's prepared, whatever it is. So, please understand, we've got a lot on our plates.
Sure.
And we're, goodness, sorry, you, you got my bug, your bug over here.
Sure.
Anyway, we're, we're really trying to help out or whatever, and it may or may not happen, you know, in the next few months, it may or not, may not happen, ever. I'm not, but I appreciate you, anything you can give us, any information, and, uh, Commissioner Contrio, I'm sure will champion it for you. And, uh, if there's nothing further from you, Commissioner, if you do, then please go ahead and then we'll...
And, and, uh, the proposal was that, uh, to let it rest for 30 days, that everybody absorb, uh, what, what we discussed this evening and, and put it on action items, uh, late, um, March. And like I said, we've got, uh, like I said, going back to Lavery, what I said earlier is that, um, if that's the case, if that's the way we're gonna judge this, these individuals, we'll, we'll take everything off the street. Because half the people out there are not, one-third are, are eager to be on the streets anyway, so, um, that's, that's my biggest hurdle of all this, and having an understanding of why, why they cannot.
And when we bring it up next time, if it helps, I can ask Maria Hernandez from MVD to come here for her influence.
And maybe we can have another discussion, I mean, maybe we can discuss it again next month and then have the vote the following month, if it, if the board feels or, or the staff feels that they need a little bit more time. Uh, normally, they, they would, they would ask for additional time, and, uh, just to make sure we have a solid, solid answer, and, and make sure we did, uh, we do, did our research part of these, saying the...
Crystal just had the point, we can pull ordinances from other municipalities.
And look at... Any, oh, he has them ready, okay. All right, thank you again, we appreciate it.
We're appreciating us consideration, we really appreciate it.
Thank you. You bet. All right, ends our non-action items.
Very well.
Wanted that you all know that I did speak with Maria from MVD about this at one point early on, um, last year. And she did say, these are extremely dangerous in our streets for the city. Um, although, uh, they can, okay, these ATVs, UTVs, they can turn in the middle of the street and the regular vehicles can. I mean, they're, that's one dangerous part of these, um, 'cause they sit lower than a car, and it's hard to see them at times. Um, there's another one, they are not crash tested for streets. That's just something for y'all to think about.
All valid points, absolutely.
And I, I think, I think also when you bring points like that, uh, if you could bring data to support, how many accidents they have, and, and so forth, because, uh, that's what we'd like to hear. I mean, if there's zero accidents and, you know, it's just like a motorcycle, I mean, heck, you hit it, it don't matter if you're hitting from a car with 10 miles an hour, you're most likely to kill that person. Or falling off a bicycle without a helmet, most likely got killed.
And that's why we have...
So, I mean, everything's dangerous out there.
That's why we have disorderance, or, you know, that's why we don't have ATVs in town right now, and that's where the probation is at, for the same reason, because we, we do have, um, motorcycles or, you know, whatnot. We, just the other day, Maria and I seen a, I think it was a 12-year-old riding a motorcycle with that one helmet, it didn't have a license plate, it was going down Avenue, um, what was it, Avenue B, I believe? Um, yes, it just happened, but do we need to add to it? Do we need to add to our streets? Um, I will bring that up before y'all when it does become an action item.
Thank you.
Was it great? On the, my name is Vandy Scala, on the tags, maybe we can ask Eunice how they do it. Um, on the visibility, they're way more visible than a motorcycle. Um, what else did you say? The crash, yeah, that I don't know about the crash testability, but they are way more visible than a, than for sure than a motorcycle.
Or a bicycle.
Or a bicycle, and, you know, the, the people that are doing stuff illegally, they're, they're gonna do it regardless, right? So, we're just trying to make it legal, making it illegal makes us safer, right? And we'll take everybody's opinion, y'all make a committee, we, uh, Eunice, we got a pamphlet that they do, they have all their laws on there, how to enforce it. I mean, it's pretty easy for Lovington to put it...
Yeah, please bring, uh, literature that we can look at, doesn't have to be the day of, if you get it together.
No, we actually have it.
Yeah, well, I mean, if you can print it off, and then that way there, drop it off over here, that it can be distributed to the commissioners, so that we can look at it, analyze it. If we got questions, then we can come back with questions, not that we give it, get it today, and we don't even have time to read it, so. Anything that you can do to inform the public, inform the commissioners, it's better for yourselves, better for everybody in the community.
This is our first time trying to do something like this.
Right.
The other thing is...
Us too.
Other thing, you know, like, these UTVs for us, you know, some like Harleys, some like Classics, some like Enduros, they're bikes, this is our thing. You know, they're just as expensive as a Harley or probably more, so not everybody has one, right? So it's not like they're gonna be hundreds of them zipping around, you know, the one, and the ones that are gonna do it legally, we're gonna do it legally anyways, that's why we don't have, we don't do much. You know, the kids that ride around, they're already doing it, so as legalized it, make it safer.
Regulate it.
Regulate it, enforce it.
So are y'all clubs, is it a club, I see the M.
There's a bunch of clubs already, right? But we're just Lovington citizens.
Our club, or...
We're just Lovington citizens trying to do something.
For Lovington.
Thank you. Thank you. Just give him a hand, anyone else? All right, moving on. We bring this to our action now.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2025 dash zero eleven, award the sale of real property located on 1201 West Tyler to Claire Hassel.
Okay, have a motion second, uh, for consideration of this resolution. It was false, I didn't know who it was.
Me or Melissa, we received two bids on this, uh, property.
Okay.
Uh, one bid, she asked, there it is, uh, one bid was, uh, not compliant, they did not have all the proper paperwork. Um, and the bid from Claire Hassel was a compliant bid, had all the proper documentation, and her price was, uh, 16.5.
And her minimum was?
15.
Okay. So, she wants to buy a tree.
Want to buy a tree, and then she's gonna put a house on it.
She tells it around the tree, it's a landmark, that is a very expensive landmark.
Now you got a house.
That was, wasn't that in the RFP about having the tree mounted?
Tree must stay.
Yeah.
Tree must stay.
Must be a circular built, roundy?
You know, the old house did have a U-shape, and that was up in there.
I know.
I don't think we're wrong with the U-shaped house, but she did have, so it'd be her documentation of the, the plan to build a single-family home there.
All right, any further discussion? All right, Mr. Shannon?
Mr. Dolls?
Yes.
Mr. Dandy?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Trigio?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2025 dash zero 12, award the construction contract for Jackson Avenue, 9th to 17th Street to Ramirez and Sons.
Okay. We have a motion and second. Discussion, okay?
Received two competitive bids, both bids were complete. The evident low bidder and even after the documentation which you have in your packets from the Engineer, Peddrun Associates, even after the analysis, they were still the most productive bid at $1,458,856.25, which still puts us within scope of the grant we did receive on it, so we're covered here.
Do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. As far as the grant, grant for this project is $2,066,000. That's 75%. I'm sorry, the total project cost is $2,175,500. Okay. The share of the state is 75%. Ours is 25%. Them figures to me ain't matching up. I should say they are not matching up because if I did my math correctly, the state's share should be $1,631,625. Our total cost, our 25% share should be $543,875. So our numbers are wrong.
Yeah, they're in the typo, so in our actual grant, sorry, I was just trying to get that together last week, so in the grant, the actual state wage rate, so the total project, it's a 95, sorry, it's the share that's wrong. It's 95% state share, 5% city share. That is, so the numbers are correct, it was the share amount that's wrong.
So it's better.
Sorry about that. So many of the grants, the share rates differ, but this one is, I just pulled the contract, it's 95.5.
Will that, will that reflect the signature of the mayor?
Yeah.
Shannon's been good about recycling.
Yeah, we have to get our figures correct.
Any other discussion? All right, Shannon.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Dole?
As long as our figures get changed, yes.
I, yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Dandy?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2025 dash zero 13, approved sale of 23,000 South.
Okay. Motion second, consideration of that.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, we went back out for RFP on this property. He designated that there should be $65,000 minimum. We did receive one bid on the second RFP, did not meet that minimum, came in at $25,000 even. So at this time, we would like to look to the commission for guidance. Do we want to re-advertise at the same $65,000 minimum bid again? Do we want to go out for RFP for a lower minimum or do we do nothing and keep the property? Crystal brought up a good point, you know, did they submit a business plan along with that low bid? And I don't believe they did.
Because that being the case.
It wasn't in RFP.
I realize that and I think, okay, because we've now had two bids that we consider to be local and yet we still don't know what they're going to do with the property. So if we're gonna, if, if the commission decides to go out for, you know, put it up for sale again, and I think that we need to put, put in there, well, or just a request for what it's going to be, yeah.
Let me ask the commission this, the bidder is present tonight and possibly could verbally give a business plan for the property. I don't know if that's appropriate or do we have to go out again?
Since it doesn't meet the, or whatever, I'm.
Correct.
I, I don't think, I don't feel like we should act on it.
We cannot entertain this, that it's below our 65,000 minimum bid set.
Exactly. Now, I'm not saying the bidder can't describe, but would probably.
Well, since it wasn't in the original RFP, I don't know why it would persuade our thought process, so we'd be better off to.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we're not, we're not going to approve it, but while he's here, it's up to y'all, I really.
No, they could open up a. We don't like worms, we don't like fish.
Okay. Then going out again, do we go out with a $65,000 minimum but entertain a business plan along with any kind of bid so we know what they're going to do with the property?
Their scope of use, not necessarily a business.
Yeah, but I think, I think if it's below the bid, it should be some sort of contract guarantee that X amount is going to take place, not just verbally or written, it has to be some sort of contract. I'm just saying, something similar to drylands, you know, we did that, you know, it was a five-year plan, going to employ X amount of employees, this and this is going to take place, stages of completion.
That had money involved with us in that situation? This one, we're just asking for a look in the window, basically. The other one had money coming from us, so I don't, I don't know if that would be appropriate.
And the thing is, if they would have met the bid, we wouldn't have to have a business plan from them or whatever, so it's not necessary.
But I'm saying, if it's a lower bid, then, then we're giving away, what I'm saying is, we are giving something away because if it's, if it's appraised at 65 and we're saying 25, that means they got 40% of equity of ours, taxpayers have given to them, so we are giving them something. So what are you going to give the taxpayers in return? Are you going to have employees or are you going to have a business open for X amount of time and so forth?
So the 65,000 is not a line in the sand, it could be lower than 65,000 if they show that they're going to bring in X amount of revenue or employ X amount of people, it's somewhat negotiable? Is that what I'm trying to understand?
If we're going to go out again, this is my opinion, my opinion of, if we're going to go out again, then I say let's either reduce or eliminate the reserve bid or the lowest, goodness, anyway, it can be less, but it has to have some sort of a intent.
A gross receipts generating for the community with jobs with the graph and the.
I don't know the true business plan, but yeah.
Do we want to have any minimum or just throw it out the window and we want a business plan instead?
Well, if we're, you know, right now I look at it is, we're either going to keep it, which.
Forever.
Literally. And it's going to continue to get worse.
Yeah, but we, but we kept the drylands property for an eternity before we ever did something with it.
Yeah, but it had nothing on it, so it's not an eternity.
That's interesting.
No argument, no. Robbie? Yeah, yes. Be okay if I ask another one to come forward?
To elaborate a little bit on this bid, I did tell the person bidding to submit a plan. I mean, just so you know, the reasoning behind it coming in lower is the person that bid is actually getting an award at the state level for manufacturing, warehousing and distribution at up to 150,000, which is going to come to you guys in the next 30 days. So at the end of the day, it could have worked out where the city's contribution could have offset that instead of us giving actual monetary, it could have been in return for the property. But he is, I mean, it's going to happen, he's actually, we've been looking for property for the last 45 days, probably longer than that, and we haven't been able to find anything and they are going to, it's going to be a very quick turnaround and they're going to do something immediately because the state is waiting on them to locate, find a property and then it's going to start production immediately, so.
Oh, if he wants to come in with a bid at 65,000, that would definitely help out.
Yeah, yeah. And I mentioned, you know, when you do submit for your bid, please put your business plan in there. I don't think he has a business plan, but he does have the economic analysis impact from the state that gives you a 10-year view of what GRTs are going to be, what the spinoff, what the schools get, guess, everything like that. And the revenues, the GRTs, we already have that, we have that, I mean, we received that two, three weeks ago. That is not, it did say to put it in there.
We could come back.
Just so you know, I mean, they do need the property and it would make a really good addition to that site of town, but it's not like this is something they're going to sit on for 12 months, it's going to be a quick turnaround, they're going to do something with it or waiting, we're looking for property now. Just.
And we went up RFP again with the, with these recommendations, how, what's the long period time?
10 days.
How much?
RFP has to be open for 10 days, please, for advertising.
Can always get it back on the table by next month. I mean, so if we did that, we can put it back on the table with recommendations from the board.
With a business plan included.
We have a 45-day window, so I'm going to, we do have a 45-day window.
Right.
Do we advertise with any numerical monetary minimum? Sorry.
Well, we're half and half. I'm not, everybody knows, I'm not a proponent for the city to be owning vacant properties. So I would much rather, again, my opinion, I would much rather entertain a lower, a lower price with a, with a business plan that's going to benefit than I would hold off for the next three years trying to find somebody that's thinking about opening a business and they're willing to pay it and we have no idea what it's going to be. So that's just my opinion. So I, if we do lower it, then somebody's just going to throw it out of their mouth. Guess we move that way.
45,000 in a business plan?
You're not getting, you're not hearing any?
I'm thinking, man.
Oh, you're thinking, okay, well, I just wondered.
I hate to see it vacant, you know, but I'd like to see a business plan.
But don't want to give it away, but don't want to give it away.
Well, but I'm like, we, we don't have anything in it.
We don't have anything to negotiate.
It was donated, so.
It's one of the small buildings.
Look at it like, like it's an incentive to actually bring something.
But I think, I think going back to what Evelyn said, I mean, the, the monies are coming back to Lovington, so we are going to benefit.
In the long term, yes.
Long term.
And just to add to it, it's, they're on the hook for five years. The money that they're receiving, they have to be open for five years. It's a clawback or they take it back, they have to pay it back when they are on the hook for five years.
I would be happy if they painted it. It's not wild.
Depending how the commission goes, I believe tomorrow if we get it correct, we can submit it to the Livingston leader, correct, and get that advertised for Thursday?
Yep.
Yep. So as, I mean, by nine, by.
They could be advertised tomorrow.
By 10 a.m.
By 10. I like.
I think, I think we understand that, we just need to find out what the literature's going to read on the sale of the property.
Going back out there for 40, with a business plan and some unicorn paperwork. I don't know what they call that, but you know, the business plan, a hopes and dreams sheet, whatever you want to call it.
Economic forecast.
There you go, that's what I'm looking for.
It's not an action item because he may want to have anything add to his proposal. Well, no, not this particular part.
It was a suggestion.
It was a suggestion. We're fixing to have an action item.
So my guidance is 40,000, but a business plan, we go out for RFP.
For 10 days.
And y'all can knock it out tomorrow.
First, and then the first meeting in March, we can put it as an action item, depending on what we receive.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Now then, discussion's over. Shannon, sorry, I had to think about where we were.
Mayor Roberts?
No.
Mr. Dole?
Yes.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, oh, no. Yes, you're with the program. No, no. Action out, great. Okay. Exactly, I'm with, yes, I'm with the program, no to this.
Right, okay.
Mr. Trigio?
Uh, no.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. Dandy?
I favor word, no. Exactly. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 25 dash zero 14, approved purchase of a sign for the Ditten Building, 100 West Central.
Second, okay, we have a motion and second, consideration of this resolution. Yes, Your Honor, how are you this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm here for questions, and we're looking for a new sign up at the courthouse and for the code enforcement officers too, maybe they can run. And the chamber also is going to be involved in the sign, and that's part of the proposal. Is there any of the text in there or just the pictures?
The mayor, the commissioners.
But it was in their package.
I could just backtrack, so we did bring one proposal to you before, it was just one option, the commission didn't like the look of the sign, so we went back and also had some conversations because during that denial, it came up about the Chamber of Commerce only having a five-year lease at the building, whereas the, you know, permanent tenants would be code enforcement and the court and whether the Chamber of Commerce should have a permanent position on that sign. At the board meeting I attended of the Chamber of Commerce, they offered a potential compromise, whereas if they can at least get some representation on the digital portion of the sign, they would entertain the possibility of everybody paying a third, a third to the chamber, a third to the courts and a third to the code enforcement budget. So that's what the resolution before you said, and then within that, within that.
Sorry.
Within that, we've given you two options with a much nicer looking sign, we think, right, Judge? Yeah, the judge did all the homework on this.
As long as David's facing on there, I'm okay. He ain't that good looking, that's why. Okay. Between that and.
Okay, so.
Oh, David isn't present.
It was named the Ditten to honor someone.
So.
We didn't name it the Ditten.
We didn't, but it was named that.
So if we're for resolution, you'd have to make a choice between these two signs. You'd also be agreeing that the Chamber of Commerce would have representation on the digital portion of the sign, whereas if you look at these two options, agency municipal court and code enforcement are on the masonry part of the sign. And that way, if Chamber moved out after five years, they wouldn't have a spot on that sign.
We would have fixed that.
Right, right. And the sign would face diagonally at the corner of First and Central, right across from Lazy Six, so that you could see it from both First and Central as you're coming northbound and westbound.
And how far back would it be because that corner is horrible to turn or anything?
Good question.
Because you can't see.
Right now, we must be that black hole, be far enough back into that rubber that grass is right in there, maybe, so we don't block anything.
And additionally, the Chamber agreed to move their stone back to in front of their offices on the, on the left side of the building, because right now it's kind of right there.
So this is the cost for the sign.
Right.
Correct me if I'm wrong on this now. Masonry would be another cost.
And electrical.
Tech support, are we paying a monthly fee?
No. And I think the judge has a ballpark figure for the total cost of the sign, they both, the, the two options are about a thousand apart.
Yes, if you have the two signs compared to just the one sign, it's the smaller sign that on the bottom there that.
Option two.
Option two, that, that one there is about a thousand dollars more than the, because it's like, signs a lot less without the digital in there.
And it's also got the letter S at the top of the. And it's also got the letter box at the top of the.
Well, I'm looking at what's our total cost for the masonry, electrical, what's that going to be on top of this? This is just for the sign.
With the lights and some security lights with it, where we're doing this for the flagpole, you're looking at about 30,000, a little bit 30,000.
Have you looked for a grant to pay for it?
Say it again.
Have you looked for any grants to pay for it?
No, I haven't.
Okay, 30,000 is just kind of to install the $18,000 sign, correct?
Well, the digital part of it and the letter box are 15,000, masonry and electrical, bring it up to 30, or 31, or 29.
Anything like a fiber.
We're getting 50 or whatever, at least.
Yeah.
I don't know about you, but that's a lot for a side.
My, my question to the Chamber is, through the conversation I had with Claire this afternoon, the commissioners were able to the board of the Chamber.
You know, that's what we're looking for, just to give a slight recognition on the lettering. You know, it doesn't have to be anything permanent on, on the block or anything. We're just saying, you know, like, we'd be able to comment anything pertaining to the Chamber and to the community through the digitals.
And you'd be able to pay for a third.
And we would give you a third. But if we can't advertise or even entertain anything on it, well, I mean, I mean, there's no sense in us putting our hand, because we wouldn't have any representation coming from the city or the municipal court.
Can you, okay, just, they, our legislature put tons of money in recreation for beautification lately. Can you check into that? Because, I mean, you've already done the grass and all that, so maybe if you put some park benches and show your beautifying the area, maybe it would qualify for something first before we go and just completely splurge on something that big.
Well, it's 30, it's 30,000, and you guys are taking one-third of the 30,000, that's what I'm understanding?
No, we're, we're for the sign.
So we'd be 10 out of the code enforcement budget, 10,000 out of the municipal court budget, and the Chamber would pick up the other 10.
That's for the installation.
That's the whole thing, soup to nuts.
Well, no.
31,000 is, it gets you everything.
That's the way I understood it.
Yeah.
Oh, I understood that there was 30,000 worth of, plus the sign.
No, no.
RFP is 30.
So it's only 20 the city would be out of, and you guys would take the other 10, so we're only out 20,000.
Till we get started.
I still would refer.
Yeah, we're only out 20,000, that's hell, that's bad.
That's a whole card.
Because if we can't have any representation or anything, I mean, it's hard to.
Right, that's understandable.
No, we understand that.
I mean, it's, you know, you're basically.
And I, to give you an idea of how, I don't know if anybody's familiar with St. Thomas Church on Ninth Street. It's the same company, the sign has the same look. We got it two years ago and it was 28,000 all in then, so I know this, this bid is not a reasonable.
And if you want to know what a digital sign costs, my WHB sign cost me 40, it's not even close to that much.
I paid 75, man.
So is the tech support and training, is that all in this cost? Because it says periodic tech support and training.
I know you deal with a little.
The software, software support services?
I, I just know that they're able to program the sign at the church, it's never had a problem.
Right.
The lady in the office does it.
She hasn't been in for five years, so.
Yeah, I just want to find out what costs we're carrying on top of this, so now's the time to ask.
Typically, it's probably going to be a one-time, maybe two-time.
Two times.
Yeah. You know, than, than whatever major valve function you're having, that would be available source on top of that, so.
And one of the main reasons for this is because the judge reports that there's constant confusion, if not on a daily, at least on a weekly basis.
Daily, we get calls every day. If they think it's magic, that they come over, we're in their trials, so we're constantly walking outside, putting them right around the corner, in there. So in that part, I wish they'd put a big sign over there in their parking lot, so it's more of the sign.
Yeah.
In their sign. We do that constantly every day, and we get phone calls every day, too. That's just normal business.
And I promise not to put my face on the board.
I think it'd be a nice to have the city advertise in there, and we could, for whatever's coming up, parades or events.
Can I say something? When I was a past director, at that time, at the Star, Main Street did offer to, of their grants that they do for signage, maybe this is something we can work with Main Street. I know they cover with the grant, you submit, they cover half, and then you, you cover the other half. Maybe that's something.
It's only up to 2,500, isn't it?
Yeah, there's.
It's not that much, about 20. Yeah, it's very, it's very.
If we can find a grant, it's just.
The people of the city here are.
Recreation of Main Street are confused on where, Main Street and municipal court is, and code enforcement, and Chamber, and, you know, it's every day, every day.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have an issue with that at all. If you could see about if there's any funding available before we take this, and as far as with Chamber, I don't think there's an issue with any of the commissioners having the Chamber be able to not put David's face on there. But I mean, as far as have your logo or whatever, but I would, yes, I don't think there'd be an issue with that, but I would just like to see if, you could see if there will be some funding. And I, I understand from City Director Miranda that the sign is in that area, ballpark. I know City Commissioner Candy told me that I need to live in 2025 because the price of signs are that much, so I understand that, but I'd like you to check that out to see if you could. Again, I'm not speaking for the whole commission, I'm just speaking for myself.
Maybe, maybe put a timeframe on it, give them 30 days, and if they don't find nothing, I hate for it to wait any longer than what we're waiting for.
Yeah, I'd like to get a sign up there for you guys, so it's not the point we don't want to.
It's a G, don't spend the money.
But we can take and we can vote on it, so. That was just my opinion.
The one thing that we are going to have to do is, in the, in the motion, we're going to have to pick one of the two options.
You're saying yes, huh?
You what?
Oh, yeah, I got.
Well, yeah, but I mean, we're going to have to pick one, and then we can vote on the.
Well, the real discussion would be, hey, are we going to kick it out because we want to see if they find the funding, wait 30 days, then.
Then we have to make a decision on options.
And you might have to get a different kind of sign with your funding, so.
That's very true, too, so.
Do you want a bigger, smaller?
No, it just, you might find some funding and it might say these requirements, but you don't need that.
I mean, say we get funding for it, can we get a better, bigger sign? That's my question.
Yes, you should.
Absolutely.
And the next question, do we have a, do we ask a grant writer or one of us? Yes, and I would start with State and New Mexico Recreation and Main Street. Okay. Maybe they'll cover all of it. Because you're in the main street.
The Chamber may even put their sign on it. If you're able to find your grant line.
Yeah.
Get their three foot in there.
Lock the corner totally.
Something like that.
I think, I think also when we do the project, probably need better direction next time. I said, because I made a presentation based on what our discussion was the last time, and now we're asking for more, you know, so, and all due respect for them coming up front, I think we should have, we should have put that in part of our discussion or on our last time, because now we're coming up with other, what should have done, and we can always keep saying that time and time again.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm in favor, 20,000 is 20,000.
30.
No, it's 20, it's 20 for us, 10 for.
30 total.
30 total, but Chamber's going to take 10.
I understand. Don't confuse us 30.
There's still many that could be used for other things if they can find.
But the city's going to be out 20, Chamber's going to be out 10.
Okay, well.
Also need to consider the fact of writing for a grant. You can't get, you can't get a grant funded with 30 days.
Right, there's another problem.
Yeah, cost could go up.
Okay, so, we have a motion on the table. Okay, I do believe that we probably need to pick an option just to complete the motion, whether we approve it or disapprove it.
Option two, is that a, a light-up sign, or what is that?
They both.
They both will have it. The little, the little.
Both of them. Flag is the digital display, which will do 2 million colors, it's programmable, it can scroll, it's.
2 million colors.
The only difference is the bottom one, like, where it says Lovington is darker, it'll be a lens, whereas the top one is white and it stands out, and it's got the city.
I like the same one because you can see Lovington, boom, you don't have to.
It's got the city logo in there.
And I'm not knocking the Chamber, but just so you, I mean, in the first one, the Chamber would be above the two Lovington apartments, just.
Sorry, sir. Just think, just.
The Chamber has all the windows.
I would do it all.
Yeah, because they still have their windows.
The Chamber.
I just, I don't want to get it up there and then it's.
The Chamber's on the windows.
Yeah.
It's my option.
Let's just do two and vote, y'all.
Okay. I like one.
Just don't throw me the middle finger and say one.
Did you say one? I'd like to amend my motion, please, and include option two.
I like it, number two.
Second.
All right, yeah, we have a motion and a second. To consideration of purchase of the sign, including option two, or proposed in option two, is there further discussion? Hearing that. Shannon?
Commissioner Candy?
I really want option one.
Stop, stop.
Then you have to say no. Then you have to say no.
I want to be supportive, too, so no.
Supportedly, no.
I like option one better.
He said no.
No.
Oh, I didn't.
I know they like option one way better, but I'm sorry.
Okay.
Commissioner White?
No, I'd like you to do a little more homework.
Commissioner Boe?
No.
Mayor Roberts?
No.
Commissioner Toggi?
Could I vote in?
Well, I was gonna, if it went two and two, then I'm going to be stuck, and I'm going to be like, I'd rather just get it done in the lawn, but, but you didn't like option, right, you wanted option one, so really, I would, I don't want to go back to the drawing board, I would love to get this thing done, so if we can help you, let us know what we can do.
So basically, decided on the sign roughly, they just need to come up with some other option for financing.
Well, but if they can get it bigger, if they can come up with funding and they get it bigger than they, as long as it meets the monument sign requirements of the city, then I don't care.
Is the commission placing some kind of a timeframe here?
Is that considered?
It's there, well, I mean, I know.
It's just sometimes going, sometimes going after grants.
It's six months.
I know.
But Main Street, I don't think.
So we're looking at probably a year before we.
The price of material keeps going up, too.
Yep. The cost would go up. Maybe the city could pay for the 28,000 and then y'all could grant to businesses to put their. Just go see what you can find, skip a meeting, come back to us with what you found, it's, you know.
If you don't find nothing, judge, just come back and just let.
And we'll vote for option one.
Yeah. I really don't care.
If I could add to that, if you could come with what it's going to cost for the cement and the electrical, please.
Yeah.
And it's all included down there.
Because the first one you brought us.
So that way there we know actually what we're going to be paying, what it's going to cost.
That was, that's what I thought, we could get that clarified.
If, if we could. That way there we can see that in front of ourselves.
If we're, if we're not from December to now, since.
I understand.
This is going to go up a bit more, but we'll work on it.
I understand. If you want to come back next commission meeting and just have all the rest included and.
We'll have to go see what the grant writers say in there, but, for a minute, we can get the information, then y'all can see what it's going to do, if it's going to be a year, then y'all can make a decision.
Yes, sir.
That's what I was.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, it was, but it wouldn't have done any good.
I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Oh, I have a motion in second. Pay the bills.
No. I'll say, I'll say, but I still love her.
Well.
I still want to.
That was the only reason. I wanted to get it all in the way.
I like one better, too. It's classier.
Yeah, I do.
People think I want to make a party.
Really?
You got your own one. Because I want to.
I know.
I have a problem with that. I don't know.
There's 20,000 there. There, like.
Yeah.
Especially that, that's right there. You have to donate it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Commissioner Boe?
I have three questions, and I just want to make sure, because I'd ask Patrick on that, on this, at the Lovington Chamber of Commerce Open House, $539.51. I want to make sure that these are not anti-donation.
Page three, what is that?
Page four, at the bottom.
Sweet job.
And I'm just, I just want to ask to find out, to have clarity, to make sure that we are not.
No, it's for the bank, it was for the Chamber banquet, and we just have the one that we count.
Commissioner Boe, are you okay with the banquet purchase for the tables, okay, is this open house part right?
Well, the banquet was another one, and I understand, get a table, I just want to make sure that we're not, that we're following our anti-donation. And the other one was Community Drug Coalition magazine, magazine sponsorship.
So on that one, I can speak for the chief, that was used with opioid funds, and since they qualify to donate opioid funds, too, we can cover that.
Okay.
That donation.
I just want to make sure that we're not.
That's an opioid, that's in addition to the ones we gave, because they do offer treatment for addiction, so.
Education.
Okay.
Yeah, that was opioid.
The ad I designed is the commissioners on there, that's what the ad is, I can send that over to you.
Oh, that's for the magazine.
For the sponsorship.
Sponsorship.
And for the Chamber banquet, it's the commissioners on there as well.
And what was the Chamber one that you were concerned about? It was, it was.
It was on the bottom of page four, Chamber of Commerce.
No, personally, I'm thinking that that number is.
I know she said that they paid something that they were supposed to pay back for their open house, that they all, like, split it.[1706.87]
Page four.
I don't think it was them.
I can check it out, Patrick, sir.
I'm at your seat.
Oh, yes.
I'm actually being a carry.
This is 124 to 24. You guys don't have it on yours?
This is 123 to 24.
I have it online.
It's all mine, that's on the ledger.
Right, and I just wanna make sure that, get some clarity on it for myself, so that it comes around again, I won't be asking again. Or then I ask again.
You're at that thorough.
I just wanna make sure we don't have any more marks against us that-
Yeah. Starting to get your hands wet?
My hands are wet. But that's it.
You're good? All right, Ms. Shannon? You're doing a good job.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Trivio? Trivio?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dain?
Yes. Yes.
But that, the items of the agenda are exhausted. We are adj-
You're exhausted?
He wanted option one.
He could have voted for option one.